Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the February 22, 2018 School Board Planning Meeting for the Dover Area School District. If you would please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Benko, roll call, please.
Mrs. Britton.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mr. DeSho.
Here.
Mr. Delauter.
Here.
Mr. Eifert.
Here.
Mr. Emmig.
Here.
Mrs. Herman.
Here.
Mrs. Maylie.
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you. First on our agenda tonight is presentations. I apologize, I had to limit Mr. Stefanovic on Tuesday night during public comments, so tonight you may have all the time you would like to talk to us about the exciting things in the township. If you don't mind with the microphones, please, so we can be recorded.
If you didn't know, yes, I am one of your township supervisors, and this year, actually, I'm the chairman of the board. So we've been discussing different things between us, but what I wanted to go over is just some things that the township is doing, and if anybody has any questions, I'll do my best to answer them if I can. I had mentioned the other night about our infrastructure improvements. Of course, that's sewer and water are our two major ones, although we have our share of roads around here. And what I didn't mention on the sewer side, our biggest problem is they have an acronym out there, INI. I don't know what that stands for, honestly, but what it is, is fresh water getting into our sewer lines. And we need to drastically reduce that, so that is one of the main things that we're going after, and in doing so, any place where we're working on our sewer lines, we're, of course, making them larger to handle additional influx of anything that's coming, both the schools and developments and anything else. And just to give you a quick perspective, our sewer plant handles average three to five million gallons a day, and on rainy days, I got emails last week, it was approaching 18 million a day. So our influx of fresh water into our sewer system can change drastically with the weather conditions. So that's one thing we're fighting, and we're doing many, many things now to get that down to an area or amount that we can handle. Of course, whenever we're working, like I mentioned, the north of the Borough project, where we want to get sewer up to, well, I don't know exactly where we're going, but there's a building up there that was going to be a winery or a...
Whiskey.
Yeah.
Distillery.
Distillery, thank you. And I believe we are going to try to get up to that area now. Now whether that business is still going to happen or not, I don't know that. And then the other main area that we have, we are out to bid on, we have selected a contractor, is the Palomino improvement. That's the one that I had mentioned that starts at Max Ice Cream and goes back. It's not from Max Ice Cream to the plant. We're not going under 74. We're going to start there and go back the process to both enlarge and secure the lines from there on back. And there are many areas where we're actually going to do it without digging. So if anybody's ever interested in that, there are some pretty interesting technologies out there that we can replace sewer lines with bigger ones, and we don't even need to dig into the ground to do so. So that's pretty interesting. The Eagle Park is one that's happening for us right now. I did hand out, and if somebody wants a copy, these are just grayscale copies of our plan that we reviewed with the public this past, like, two weeks ago. And it's the use of the golf course behind the current township building. That, in addition to getting a new municipal building, is going to cause Municipal Road to end. It will not go through. It will be abandoned down behind the building because the new municipal building's going to come out too close to it. So that won't be a throughway anymore. And the grayscale that you see here is the current plan for this, the property back there, right behind Municipal Road and the municipal building. I don't know if you can see it or not. That is planned to be an amphitheater. You can see the ballpark there, the large one, which is the full size, and then actually towards 74, there is a smaller diamond for softball and, I guess, other sports for the younger children. The land back here has the stream running through it, and the stream restoration is a very important part of what we're doing to satisfy our requirements for the Chesapeake Bay improvements and all that. And there's another acronym, MS4, out there that as a township, we have to meet a lot of requirements over the coming years, and actually, they are mandating that we spend money to do so. The nice part about this is it's going to help us meet both those requirements, and right now, we are planning that a lot of the funds to do this is going to come from grants. So there's no taxpayers' money from immediate. I mean, your taxpayers' money is getting out there and then coming back again, but there won't be any additional taxpayers' money to do this. I was talking with Dave, and I asked him not to let me forget one quick thing here about the stream restoration. Well, two, it's going to be done in such a way that the school can use it for science projects and just doing all kinds of research and that that you could want to down in that area. They actually took borings down through the current earth that's out there to a point where they believe they found the original floodplain of that stream at least 150 years ago. Their plan is to restore it back to that floodplain and that level, and to bring back the vegetation and everything that was there, or they think was there, anyway, in those timeframes. So it should be a very interesting ordeal, and it should be very nice when they're done, I think, as far as all the vegetation and everything else that's going to be out there. Is there any questions? Does anybody have any? This information is over at the township building, I know that. Full color renderings of this. At our meeting, there were several suggestions and questions, so those suggestions, they are trying to see if they can incorporate them in our plan or change our plan to meet the suggestions that were made at that meeting.
I do have a question.
Yes.
Who's spearheading the actual improvements? Is the township doing that, or is there outside organizations that the township are using to, like, implement the actual changes? And when you say "they" want to do this, who is the "they"?
There is a planning firm designed, prepared by YSM. My eyes aren't good enough for this copy here, but no, it's a land studies group that specializes in restoration of creeks and streams and that, that we are using to prepare the plans. And they're the ones that are going to assist then to go out to bid, to get the actual work done. A lot of the design is coming from that group, but there is an individual, Shalae Harris, at the township that is sort of in charge of keeping this thing moving and trying to get it done.
What's the timeframe for completion on it, pending, I guess, the grant?
She says it's going to be phased, which I can appreciate that. But we are planning to go out to bid on it in the coming months here, in the next maybe two to three months, and then implement it. So is it going to be done complete in a year and a half or two years? That, to me, is a fair guess on that.
Thank you.
Some might depend on how the bids come back and how all that falls together. So, okay. The one thing on there, the municipal building, I had mentioned. We are out for final bids on that right now. I believe they are due in February, so we are to choose our contractor and go over all that. I will let you know. I hope it doesn't happen to you like it did to us. Our initial design definitely met our requirements. The people that did the design were trying to incorporate a few other things in, and when we got the bids back, it was outside the range that was acceptable to us. So we stepped back and took another shot at it. I guess you could say, no, we tailed back some of the things that were not really important to our original goals, and our bids that come back now, we hope, are going to be more in line with the budget that we established for that. And that budget was around four and a half million for the buildings, for the maintenance I did mention the comp plan. Actually, I saw another email on that, so that is coming this year, and I had commented. I know they're going to be asking if one or two or whatever many people from the school organization would like to participate in that. There may be a fair-sized group, fair-sized to me, anyway, 10 to 15 people. I think they're saying 15 is probably on the high end. At some point, it becomes difficult to just coordinate everybody's schedules because we want to get that moved along, too. We are being asked by the county to get that done this year, if we can.
Other question, if I might.
Yeah.
Does this plan also include the southern bypass around the square, then? Is there a road, actually, that is going to connect West Canal to Route 74 somewhere south of the Borough?
If you see on the plan for the park, on the perimeter of that, and you see an arrow going off, if you hold it this way, you see an arrow going off there? Yes, that is a road that goes around and is planned to connect to 74. It's nowhere near a straight shot, but you could then come on the south end of Dover on that road around this park, and then come over and get on intermediate avenue, which we are planning to take around and come in over at Harmony Grove and 74 on the north side. So I'm not sure in my mind that it's called a bypass, but it will be another way for people to get around the square if they don't want to go through the square. And the other nice part is it's going to be for emergency purposes, too. If there is anything going on in town, you will still be able to get around. It's not going to completely shut down everything, so that'll accomplish also. And really, that, pretty much, I mean, I had a few comments for the building thing that's going on. We discussed those in that meeting, and that was really all I had right now, unless someone else had a question.
Anybody else?
I don't necessarily have a question, but I do, I want to thank you for coming here and speaking with us. I know one of my frustrations over many years, even prior to me getting on the board and while I was attending township meetings, was the fact that there never seemed to be any communication between the township and the school district, especially in regards to, you know, development implementation and things like that. And sometimes, it seemed like in the past, the township's attitude was, "It's not our problem." You know, when I, as I said in saying, you know, "How's this going to affect the school population?" and things like that. So I'm hoping that this is maybe the beginning of more cooperation between the two entities that we can start working together to create a better community. So, again, I appreciate you coming.
I can say for the term that I'm going to be there, yes, it will improve. One suggestion we had was, we may rotate. I'm sure you do it, too. We have our share of meetings to go to, everybody. So there are five supervisors. We may rotate, and a different supervisor will come to every meeting. I'm not sure they will come to the Tuesday and Thursday meeting, but we'll coordinate it that way to keep each other informed, then.
Again, thank you for that.
Sure, yeah. And if there's anything you want me to take back to our next meeting, which is next Monday, that's the purpose, then, is to do this.
Anybody else? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Stefanovic. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
You willing to sign this? Is that what you...
No, I have you already on the agenda. Thank you.
Okay. Next on our agenda is our first public comment period. This is a three-minute period for items on or off of the agenda, so if you have anything you would like to comment on, please come to the seats with the microphones and state your name and address for the record. A little different than Tuesday night. Okay, we'll move on to Board President's Communication. There will be an executive session immediately following tonight's meeting so that we can discuss several personnel and student and legal matters. So, again, that will be right after tonight's meeting. Other than that, I do not have anything else to add at this time. So we will roll right into our committee reports at this point, so I'd like to start with the Comprehensive Planning and Curriculum and Professional Development Committee. Mrs. Maylie, Mr. Delauter, and Mrs. Herman.
Okay. Well, Dr. Maloney hit the ground running tonight with almost a 50-minute overview of what's happening in the district concerning curriculum assessment and those kind of things. So, again, I'm going to do a very quick synopsis because I can never do her justice what she did tonight. She started by reviewing the standardized testing and the graduate levels, again, just reviewing what they are, such as keystones and PSSA, and how they're given and why. And then we talked, she talked extensively about actions that they are trying to implement to improve our student achievement in lieu of, at this point, a standardized curriculum for the district. Some of the things that they felt were an immediate need to help improve our outcomes for our students. We looked at that analysis using the PSSA data, the P-VAS, the MAP, CDT, and the curriculum assessments. We looked at, reviewed what standards are, that the students are... Excuse me.
Move that away from the microphone.
You know, again, we looked at the standards that the teachers are required to cover, as well as the eligible content within those standards. Looked at some of the released item samplers from the, I believe, more basically the PSSA other than the Keystone, but some of the things that the state releases every year at the end of the test that our teachers can look at and say, "Okay, this is kind of what we need to prepare for for next year." Again, just looking at the implementation of EdMantle, which includes Study Island, Education City, and Reading Ags. Talked a little bit about Keystone Coach and Performance Coach, and Mrs. Gross kind of gave a short overview on how they're implementing that and using that in intermediate school, again, to help, as a resource for our teachers, to help improve our students' scores. Looked at our professional development, our everyday math, using our consultant and how we're improving on that, using our depth of knowledge, and our TDA, which is Text-Dependent Analysis Instruction. And also, and text-dependent analysis is kind of our writing, what we're expecting our students to write and to be able to include in their readings. And, of course, our instructional practices. And, again, talk briefly about the data analysis and how they're doing this during the early dismissal days, how they're seeing that, and actually looking through the data that was collected, and then just very briefly on how our curriculum writing is coming along. Some of the future plans that they're hopeful for is they'd like to implement a three-year plan to have a standard-based, or standard, excuse me, aligned curriculum in place for us. Again, more instructional best practices, a data analysis plan, an assessment plan, some tiered interventions, again, to make sure that those students that are struggling get the necessary interventions to help them achieve. And then looking at our culture, the PBIS, and school safety. So that's really a quick overview. I would ask, I think, and Mrs. Herman, Mrs. Maylie, if you agree, it was very good information that she gave to us, and I would really, I think that it would help the rest of the board to hear that information from her. So I don't know if that's something that we may want to, and if you'd be willing to present before the whole board. Again, I think it was very eye-opening. They are doing a tremendous amount of work in this district, and as Dr. Maloney had alluded to in our meeting, a lot of good things are happening in our district that don't necessarily show up in our scores, which is sad, I think, in a way. And, again, I think what she presents is well worth the rest of the board hearing, so that's all I have at this point. Ladies?
I'd like to say something. It's so important to have training, and you can't just train once. So I'm so pleased that we support these consultants to keep coming in, because you can put 30 teachers in a room and have someone there from the program explaining the whole thing, and 30 teachers go back and do 30 different things. And unless you have somebody following up with what they're doing and going in and talking with them, you do a ha moment. "Oh, well, gee, I never thought about it that way." So it's so important that we support all the training and the retraining and the consulting. And I know that Dr. Maloney's been out in the classrooms a lot, helping that way. We turn teachers loose into a room and shut the door, and that's where they go from there. And it's not their fault. It's just that they interpret something differently than the other 29 people have interpreted it. So it's so important. I'm so excited about that. And the other thing is the data. I know we used to sit and talk about data. "Oh, yeah, this child, look at what the scores are." And then that was kind of like it. You'd walk out of the little meeting room, and then, "Okay, now what do I do next?" So, and no teacher ever wants to admit that they don't know how to do something. It's like the kiss of death, they feel. And it's not true. I mean, they don't always know how to fix something, how to implement the way it should be taught, or the way the child should be schooled in a certain subject or in a certain idea. So it's so important. Everything that they're doing is so important. I'm so excited. And they're talking, and they're not, you know, too often, the administrators at the top do their thing. They run the district, and they don't worry about, "Oh, well, the principals can do all that." But, you know, they need, everybody needs encouragement. Everybody does. We need encouragement. So we just need to keep on with that. I'm excited that we're in the right place, too, that we're helping them do what they need to do.
Anybody else? Okay. Hearing none, we'll move on. Next to Facilities and Safe and Supportive Schools, which were combined committees tonight with Mr. Emmig, Mr. Rahauer, and Mr. DeSho.
Okay. First thing we talked about tonight was our D-10 requests. For the stadium, we did not purchase any new cameras for the stadium as of right now. What they did, they purchased DVRs instead, so that still remains on the D-10 list. A bucket truck, currently, Mr. Nelson is still trying to search for a bucket truck. He is being very conservative. He does not want to spend $20,000 for a bucket truck. He would rather stay within the $10,000 to $15,000 range, and Mr. Stefanovic gave him a contact that he could go to to look for one of those. Multi-purpose room in Weigeltstown. It is very difficult when they're trying to show films in that multi-purpose room, so he has on there to install motorized blinds for the gym. Repaint the fifth-grade hallways at Weigeltstown. Replace carpeting at North Salem. The carpeting in North Salem was put in in 1999, so they're looking at replacing those. Replace the hot water heater at LIB. Also at LIB, upgrade the playground equipment. The playground equipment, when they put that in, since we moved fifth and sixth to LIB, now we have to upgrade for fifth and sixth. But we talked about that. If we're going to implement the new high school, and we move sixth grade and seventh and eighth to the current high school, do we need to upgrade the current playground equipment for fifth and sixth if we're just going to have kindergarten through fourth there? As far as the building goes, we're going to have a separate site contractor. There's going to be a separate road for construction vehicles behind the intermediate school so they do not interfere with parents and students at the intermediate school once construction begins. However, we cannot put out any bids until all the permits are in, and we must stay on the timeline to avoid any interruptions for the students and staff. And this item that we also talked about is currently what's going on around the schools in York County, and that is safety. It was proposed, and they're looking into getting key fobs, that there will be people in the buildings that if something would happen, they can push a key and lock all the doors. So, and that's something that Mrs. Herman was concerned about. And as far as the exterior doors, they're looking at a system that if exterior doors propped open, there will be a system in the main office that a red light will alert the person in there that there isn't exterior door open. And we also looked in the possibility of metal detectors for the buildings. Mr. Stefanovic, I thank him for coming. He gave us some insight, as well as what he brought up here tonight. And, let's see, what else do we have? Oh, evaluate the roof for repairs and replacement at LIB. We have to do an infrared scan for that. Classrooms, as far as replace the carpeting. The carpeting at LIB is actually 20 years old, and they want to add a second line to the cafeteria at LIB as well. And the comment was made, if we combine fifth, sixth grade with seventh and eighth, there's a possibility we could not have to spend that much money, spend any more money for a second line. But these are just possibilities that we're looking at. One other thing before I get to Mrs. Curry, it was made a suggestion, since the facilities wants to concentrate on all the other buildings and everything that's going on, it was recommended we have a separate committee just for the new building alone, and Mr. DeSho will be chairperson of that committee. So, and the only other thing, since Safe and Supportive was combined with us, Mrs. Curry, do you want to come up and just give us an update on what you had brought up at our committee?
What I have brought to the committee tonight is Policy 808, which is operations and has to do with Act 55 and the meal shaming and unpaid lunch meals. I brought two suggestions that PASBA has sent down on their revisions to add to maybe Dover's. One has to do with what is a requirement for us to run a direct certification of free and reduced students from the state website, and we do do that three times a year. That's the requirement. I'm actually running it once a month, so we're actually working to collect as many free students as we can so that we're on top of that. And the other addition that I asked the committee to consider is, in our Dover's policy right now, we're kind of vague on our communication about unpaid meals and who we can talk to and who we can not. So there's a section in here that gives direction as to only talking to parents and guardians about that and not drawing out and identifying students in line. And that collection of money and what we do only goes to parents and guardians and never to a student. So those are the two suggestions that I brought to committee, and they've asked me to take them, give them to Mrs. Allman to add to our present policy so that we can take a look at it again with those additions in it. And questions to what we've done, or hear what we are doing right now?
Thank you, Mrs. Curry.
Thank you.
Mr. Nelson, anything else you want to add to our committee for tonight?
I don't think so.
Okay. Mr. Rahauer, anything that I might have missed?
No.
Mr. DeSho, anything?
The only thing that I had was, for the playground equipment for LIB, we did say that we were going to try to work with the PTO and see if they would be willing to help do fundraisers for it, stuff like that. So the idea of us not doing it's not out there. It's not gone, so we can try to work that out.
And the only other thing that I missed was, for LIB, is a dedicated STEAM/maker space room. Right now, we don't know the cost of that or where the possible location is going to be going. So I don't know if you have anything else on that?
If you could come to the microphone, please.
This year, we have a group of staff members who are really motivated to increase our presence with STEAM or STEM, so we're doing a lot of outside kind of things, but we don't have a space that's dedicated to really bring our classrooms and our students together. So we originally thought about taking away our static computer lab as one place that we could take care of that at this point. But we might be looking at maybe the possible use of the portable next year if there's not a need to use that as a classroom. So we're open to looking at where we might have some spaces, but in order to really look, make that maker space what would be very usable, it might need some plumbing and things like that. So that's why we're looking at it as a possible alteration or improvement project to really spec that out and maybe see where we could really take advantage of that. Regarding the playground, the PTO already has a playground committee formed and are already talking about things. We approached the beginning of the school year with our fundraisers and our largest fundraiser was our Laps for Live. And they've decided to dedicate that our fundraising efforts will go towards the improvement of the playground. So certainly, there's a group of parents and staff members who are already looking at that and want to partner with the district and do as many things as we can to combine our resources to improve the playground. Just since I'm having the opportunity, I realize the statement or the comment about the playground equipment being originally placed there when it was a Cato four building and we moved the fifth and sixth grade students over there. That's also, the one piece that the PTO and the district combined resources a few years ago to replace, that was the piece that was focused on the age group that was there. And that was to replace some of the old wooden structures that you see a lot of times at the fun forts because it was just deemed unsafe and some of the chemicals that were used to treat that, we literally had to take that away. So we're looking at just improving the equipment that's there and upgrade that for any, would be for any age group, but I think that's probably where that statement's coming from is that the piece that we, is the newest piece that is within the last ten years was and is marketed and designed for the younger group.
I just wanted to clarify something for you, Dr. Weasley, because I saw you starting to break out into a cold sweat when the playground conversation was brought up. The conversation regarding the sixth grade level, and that actually did not have anything to do with playground. That conversation actually took place as it related to the second cafeteria line and what impact there might be if we pulled the sixth grade out and brought them up to the new middle school. So playground, we recognize there's a real issue there and Dennis and I, having both had children, go through that, recognize some of that equipment's probably older than we are, so you know, we recognize there's an issue there. So that did, actually did not have anything to do with the playground, so you can take deep breath now.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Weasley.
Thank you.
As far as I know, Mr. President, that's all that the facilities and Safe and Supportive Schools has.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question. So the construction entrance that's gonna be dedicated, you're gonna have a separate road, separate entrance for construction of the new building?
It'll go behind the intermediate building, right, Mr. Nelson? It will go behind, they're gonna put a fence up.
But will that affect the sports fields that are over there? And if so, is there a contingent plan for next year?
Dave, could you please come to the microphone?
We will be building sports fields at North Salem to compensate for the loss of fields at the intermediate school site while we're in construction. And one of the first things we have to do is put our retention basins in for stormwater, so that's where the fields are now, so that'll be the first thing that'll have to happen. So the fields will be, we'll construct a multi-purpose field and baseball softball field at the North Salem site for that purpose.
Okay, so the multi-purpose field would be like for the soccer lacrosse, it's typically, okay, and then the baseball softball, okay.
Well, basically, we wanna take, and I know it's really kind of hard to visualize, but we wanna take about a driveway width off the back of the parking lot as it comes down along the current soccer field. And we wanna put a fence up so that we keep the construction people and traffic totally away from tracks, from the students and staff parking. So we isolate them that they can't, literally can't walk over and mingle with the kids or teachers or any of that kind of stuff.
Dave, how will that then affect, I mean, we just, we're allowing right now the Dover Youth Football Organization to use North Salem's field in the back, so if we're putting temporary fields back there, how's that going to affect that?
They won't be on our property next year. I've already informed them that due to the project moving forward, we were gonna need that field for our use, and they've made arrangements to secure other facilities for their program. They still haven't gotten their trailer out, I thought they'd get that out while it was frozen, they haven't done that yet. So.
So is that a permanent move for them or just a temporary?
Permanent, for right now anyway, for the next several years, anyway, yeah.
I had a question on the D-ten list of projects, there was obviously nothing listed for the intermediate school, which, you know, makes perfect sense that if we're going to be demolishing that building, we're not gonna wanna put a lot of money in it. But, you know, just in hearing the testimonies the other night from parents and have kids in the school and hearing it, knowing it ourselves, is there anything that you foresee, you know, till two years from now, that is not gonna be able to put on hold, that there's gonna be some things that we're gonna have to address in the interim, even if it's an all, you know, for a temporary?
Nothing major stands out, of course tomorrow that could change, but nothing, you know, the boilers are in really good shape down there as far, I mean, they're twelve years old, but other than that, they're not in bad shape. Our hot water tanks in fairly decent shape down there, so that's the big stuff. I mean, we could have an air conditioning breakdown like we did last year, I mean, it's, you don't know. But overall, I think structure-wise, we're okay. And we're gonna have to keep, you know, addressing every time we get a roof leak or every time, you know, pipe starts leaking, we're gonna have to address that as we go, just, you know. I think one of, some of the things we talked about in some of our meetings so far is, we don't really wanna do a lot at the intermediate school because we're gonna demo it, and we don't wanna do a whole lot at the high school because we don't know how we wanna utilize that building at this point. Until we start to get a conversation started with the seventh and eighth grade staff, how do they wanna utilize that school, you know? I don't wanna go fixing a room up and then they come along and say, well, we don't want that room there, we're gonna gut that one. You know, so we're kind of holding off on unless we have to at the high school, too. Just because, that's gonna be part of our next project as we're moving forward, probably we'll start planning that. I'm thinking September, October, we'll start talking about the high school, what we're gonna do at the high school when, you know, we're in the last year of construction at the new building. So we run in kind of two construction sites at one time, so.
Is there anything we can do at the intermediate school on a temporary or portable basis related to sound within the auditorium with the assemblies that I've attended, concerts, things like that? The sound system is very lacking, for better word, really.
We had looked at that right after the last concert in...
At the holidays?
Yeah, at the holidays, I'm trying to think exactly when it was, because you and I were both there. We were all three there, I know, I don't know how many more of you were there, but I knew that three of us were, because we saw each other. But actually, what was wrong there is somebody had started, that didn't understand the equipment, started fiddling with it, had it kind of off balance, if you will. So we, Dom has looked into that and we're gonna have somebody come in and see if we can improve it a little bit and then set it up. And I think we'll be much better if we make sure that we have somebody there that understands how the equipment works and how to operate it versus just, and I'm not picking on anybody, but just having like a teacher go in there and say, well, I know how this works, and all at once, it's all messed up. So that's kind of our plan. Yeah, we'll address things like that as we go, I mean.
So we don't have any other portable speakers that we can put on the stage or do something? Because even at the awards night the other night, I mean, it was so hard to hear.
And we can do that, yeah, we can, we can look into that, you know. I know Dom was working on it, so I can't speak for what he was doing with it, but I know that they talked about some upgrades there, some not real expensive upgrades, if you will.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I just had one. On the D-ten, I heard something about a possible roof replacement at Live, is that?
Not a total replacement, some roof work. We have to identify what that roof work is. We have, we have one section right now, actually, we're waiting for the weather to get to the point where we can do it. It's been a sort of a, it was a bad design, you know, it's been, it's been a habitual problem for years. So we're gonna, we're gonna address that and eliminate what they did. Basically, they have, they have a roof coming into a wall like this, but it actually comes in like that. So it holds water, it's like, it's like a swimming pool. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna, we're gonna actually build a wall that comes down like this to match the roof that's there to get the water away, and that should eliminate our issue. But, yeah, we had two good days, but let me see what today is, so we have to wait till we get a day where it's dry and it's warm enough that we can get up there with, you know, we don't have to worry about it raining tomorrow. We're gonna need a couple of dry days to do it and dry it in. That's one of the areas, there's a couple of other areas. We don't have a lot of roof leaks at Live, I mean, we have a couple here and there every now and then, but, you know, we'll wanna get up on that roof, I wanna have a, wanna have a professional company come in and take a look at it. And any susceptible areas, if we go up on that roof and say, well, this really doesn't look good, or if Dr. Weasley says, you know, we always have trouble right here, it leaks, you know, and then you fix it and then six months later, it leaks again. That might be an area we need to do an infrared thermographic scan on it to tell where it's infiltrating and then, you know, address that area, so. We had done the same thing about, right after I started here, maybe eleven years ago, ten years ago, I don't exactly when it was, we had a really weekend where we got a lot of ice and snow and our roof at the intermediate school failed. And I mean, it failed, to the point we had to replace the whole entire gym floor because it just buckled. And at that time, they wanted to replace the whole roof and I brought some people in that I know and we took a hard look at it and we spent about eight thousand dollars on that roof and hasn't leaked yet. So, and we didn't replace it, we just did some repairs that needed to be, needed to be done. They use an elastiform material around projections in the roof, like where pipes come out or where it goes up against the wall. Life expectancy on elastiform is about fifteen, eighteen years, starts to get hard, brittle, crack. It's real flexible when you first put it down, that's the kind of stuff you gotta go back and replace, you gotta go back and do that, you gotta go back and do the seams and that kind of thing, you gotta put another seam seal on, so. But that's the kind of stuff we'll look at at Live, North Salem, we're, you know, we're gonna do the same thing. We have a couple of areas at North Salem that no matter what we do, we gotta leak, you know. So that's the kind of stuff we're gonna, we'll take a look, hard look at.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you, Dave. Human and Fiscal Resources, Mr. Cook and Mrs. Brenton.
We had a limited agenda tonight, but just wanted to give you an update on the state budget as it stands right now. Obviously, it's not approved yet, so just as kind of preliminary out there. As of now, it looks like approximately a hundred and twelve thousand dollar increase in basic education funding for us. And these other numbers are not, not quite set in stone, the special education budget, I think you showed us a number of like forty-five thousand potential, but that increase is potentially using the wrong data, like previous year's data, so that will likely change. The Ready to Learn Grant is supposedly gonna be funded at the same place as what it was last year, so stay tuned, there's always more changes coming. But as, as that's all happening at the state level, we're also working internally here on our eighteen, nineteen budget, currently working with elementary, I think was what you had said. But coming up, just sort of giving you a little bit of a timetable, coming up next month will be the preliminary, preliminary budget for us to be approved for eighteen, nineteen.
It'll actually just be a presentation next month?
Okay.
It's just a presentation, not ready for the approval.
All right, not, not the approval part, but the original, there's a couple steps that take place. You have the original preliminary presentation, then in another month, there's some tweaking that comes about, and then that, that, in April, we will preliminarily vote an approval for it to be posted, it has to be posted for thirty days, and then finally, to meet our goal of having it in place in May, then May when it comes back, then it's for a final approval. So that's sort of the timeframe. We also talked about the York Adams Academy budget, which is going to be on our agenda for March to approve. In a nutshell, there's a slight increase in their budget, about ninety-six hundred dollars total in their general operating budget. How that relates to us, it relates to about a one hundred dollar per seat increase for us over what it was this year. And currently, Terry, maybe you know this even more, we think fourteen seats approximately is what we have right now. And...
Is, because I spoke with Mrs. Fryrick, who's the president of the board there at York Adams today, and she said that Dover is increasing their seats for next year. Okay. Because I told her, I said I wasn't aware of that. Okay, so we are. So where are we going to then?
Eighteen, eighteen, Bobby. Eighteen seats.
So, yeah, we are.
I should've told her, so I can get that far. Yes, yep.
Okay. That budget will be coming to us for board approval then, next month. And we also talked a little bit about the topic of intention letters. Mr. Jacoby had informed us that this was a procedure which used to take place in our district where, as we start to look at needs for classroom, you know, maybe adjustments or additional classrooms based on class size, that sort of thing, at this time of the year as we're working on budgets, there may be some teachers out there that might be interested in moving to a different classroom, different building, that sort of thing. So as a collaborative effort to give them a little bit of, you know, say in the matter or at least get their wishes known, these intention letters are being distributed and allowing them to let the administration know if they have an interest in moving to a different position or a different building. So that process is happening right now. It's again, a way to let your voice be heard and as you start to make those decisions, that can come into play, though. So that's happening right now and that will be happening for about a week, I think you shared, right? So Christina's trying to bring that back into the district, get a little more feedback from the staff, so. Amy, did anything else that I might have missed? Okay.
Any questions? Okay, hearing done, we'll move on to our miscellaneous category now that the reports are over. Do we have any other comments or observations from our board members tonight?
Yes, I was reading my emails today, I don't know if we gave any thought to it or not, it says about the ESA vouchers that are being discussed in Harrisburg about as a board, we could maybe send in whether we agree with it or don't agree with it because they figure if it passes, it'll take about five hundred million out of the education system. The next one is, we used to have town meetings, which we don't have no more, and the question was raised, and it turned up the other night when Steve went to talk, that, you know, we're living at only time, how a person that wants to have more than three minutes, do they have to contact the school and get put on the agenda before the meeting? Or how that could work, that we could improve our communications? Because we used to have four town meetings a year, but we haven't had none for several years now, when people could come and board members would be there and could answer questions. That's my comment on that. And maybe I misunderstood the other evening, Tuesday evening, which sometimes I do, that only emails were considered in the vote, as far as you said, we had so many positive and so many negative, or was the total number of the ones that commented at the hearing?
All of those written comments and I think emails was used, but it was written comments received by the district, we received both via mail and via email. So they were all included in that packet when it was attached to the PlanCon D and E documents that we submit to the state, they were all included in those documents that were approved Tuesday night. And it was included in Mr. Eifert's stacks, too.
It was a combination of both.
What's that?
It was a combination of both.
Correct.
But was it, were the, were the comments that were made at the Act thirty-four meeting, were they, they were printed up and they were included?
Yeah, in the PlanCon D and E documents, there's the transcripts from the hearing from the stenographer. So everything that was stated at the Act thirty-four hearing and all the written comments were a part of that package that will go to PDE for approval.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I did wanna say something, which I forgot when Steve and I, during... I did want to say something, um, which I, I forgot when Steve and I, during our meeting, Dr. Weasley had some good news. Would you be willing to share with the sta-, I'm sorry to make you come back up, but it's really awesome news, and I really want to share it about the, the students at LIB and the, the STEAM program. So I just want to recognize them for their awesome work.
Thank you. I'd love to share the celebrations. Yesterday and today, uh, Lincoln Intermediate Unit off, uh, hosted their two thousand and eighteen Connects Design Challenge, and, uh, LIB staff had put some teams together. And this is the second year they participated, and we increased the, the participation. Yesterday was the fourth and fifth grade competition, and we took two teams, and today was the sixth grade competition, which consisted of sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, uh, teams enrolled. All three teams did fantastic, uh, but our biggest accomplishment is that our fourth grade team yesterday took first place out of all fifty-seven teams. So, pretty proud of that, yeah. And the purpose, testing, the purpose of the, the project was to develop a piece of equipment to respond to an environmental concern or environmental issue. So the sixth grade team today, uh, and I put the STEM, our STEM law, uh, Twitter account and my LIB Twitter account is showing a lot of those, those, those videos and, and photos. But the project for the sixth grade team today was a T-shirt folder. Um, and I think in the rubric, I think that what happened was, there was, and there was a ve-, there was a set, series of judges that went around to all the, the groups, and there, there was a rubric that the students had to, uh, follow. I think today, the sixth grade program, they fell a little short with the environmental connection with the T-shirt folder. Uh, the fifth grade team did a beverage can dispenser, uh, and that connection was that that you would have, because they had it set up, that it would be, uh, there was a ice pack at the bottom, it would reduce the number of times you have to open a refrigerator to get a cold drink. And the winning, the fourth grade winning project, I have to say, was a dog pooper scooper. That would then collect, uh, the waste, put it in a temporary composter, and then that piece of equipment would take it over to a larger composter. So that's, that was the environmental connection, yeah. Great minds really working with our students. So thank you for recognizing that. It was nice.
And we did note that the T-shirt folder, we had seen, uh, a video on Facebook that people were paying ten thousand dollars for the same machine in their house, you know, you know, just saying.
Very comparable machine, anyway, not made out of Connect pieces, but...
Yeah, not made out of Connects. Does the same thing, so, you know, Dover proud.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you to Mrs. Kroom for Wednesday, for getting the children calmly off the buses and into the schools, and for coaching, um, all the administrators. And I know that a lot of times when the kids get to school, they get so busy, they forget the outside world. So thank you for, for taking care of the parents, too, because I would have been scared to death. And I, it's just so nice to know because you're not there, you have no idea what's happening.
And I just need to say, the building administrators, I, I can't say enough. I mean, these kids go in, they were calm, they each had faculty meetings, calmed the teachers down, because the teachers, it was the first day, and the teachers were a little stressed a little bit. The teachers were good, the kids were good, we worked through some issues, and everybody was, was great, you know, that, but the building administrators really deserve a lot of credit because they did an amazing job keeping the kids in for recess on the most beautiful day of the year so far, but they did great.
And also, please express our thank you to the police department, the Northern Regional Police.
Well, you can, if you'd like to help us, we are going to put a cover dish luncheon together for them, probably May, after PSSAs are over, all of us, and we're going to take it over and eat with them. So I'll keep you posted on that, because, yeah, they, they were, they were awesome. They were just awesome in our building. They were great.
Yeah, and I just think, too, just the, the communication, I think, was outstanding as well. I don't know how many texts and Skype alerts that I received throughout the day, and I think, um, again, as a parent, uh, it was nice to, to get those updates as to where we are, what was going on. Uh, and I know talking and listening and looking on social media, a lot of folks were, were very happy with, with that communication, and, uh, so it was, I, I think it helped relieve a lot of us as parents of what was going on in the district, so.
This was a tough one because, you notice, we left you immediately on Tuesday night to go find out, find this out. By the time I got home an hour later, it had changed. By the next morning, it had changed again. So it was really an interesting dynamic to go through, but everyone just rallied, and it was, it was great.
Anybody else? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to our last public comment period. This is the two-minute period for items on or off of the agenda. Uh, so if anybody has anything they'd like to comment on, please come to the seats with the microphones. Okay, future meetings. Uh, our next meeting will be March twentieth, two thousand and eighteen, and that will be our regular board meeting, seven PM. And then we will have, uh, on March twenty-second, our board committee meetings at six, and our board planning meeting at seven. So if there's nothing else tonight, I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Go ahead.
There's, we had a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned, thank you.